Now we're going to call it Wednesday, September 25th, 2025, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioner to Order. I'm going to read the memo on remote patients. On March 28th, 2025, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill 62, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That's General Law Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. Welcome. I'm going to ask if you'll join me in slitting a file.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote. Commissioner State.
Present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a call. Number one. Number two is roll call. Number three, no executive session today. Number four, minutes in the executive session meeting of June 19th, 2025 for approval.
Have reviewed them and would move approval at presented stipulation. I can release this at the time as the chair sort of declares.
Yes, second.
Motion made in second, in all favor. It is a vote. Thank you. The five is appointments. We have none. Number six, public comment. Each week at our meeting, we have a section in our agenda for public comment. We are at that section. If there's anyone out in Zoom land that has any comment, now is the time to bring it up. Commissioner Director Collins, have you heard from anyone relative to public comment? I have a request for public comment. Last call for public comment. Seeing then we'll move to number seven, old business. We do have one item in our agenda under old business. It's a request from the Town of Millis for Engineering Department surveys. Originally submitted last week, it held it off for one week. Puppies in your packet. Has to do with our engineering department. Helping the Old Grove Farm in relation to appropriate boundary lines located in the use line location to be used as visual aid. And we have the paperwork from John McAvoy, who is the Old Grove Farm Commissioner. Patrick, are you on the line?
Yes, I am Chairman Shea.
Commissioner State, did you have a question last week?
I did, yes. Chairman, thank you, Chairman Shea. So Patrick, you've had, it seems, a run on requests from different towns, which is good.
Yes.
But same time, you know, I'm just worried. I don't want to see our department being overstretched since we're just beginning, if you will, the new fiscal year. I mean, if this is something you feel you and your crew, with no disrespect, can handle, that's fine, but I thought we could pump the brakes and take a look at these things. What's your thoughts on that?
This is definitely in our wheelhouse and it's a, it's a, as time permits, project. The timeline is, is open from the Farm Commission and the town. So it puts no added pressure onto the department. So this can be a fill-in and make-work job as, as we have openings.
Okay. I guess the key thing here is you can do it as the schedule is a little different.
Yes.
Oh, that timeline.
Yep.
All right. I just wanted to hear from you and make sure, you know, but you're doing a great job. Everybody, obviously, we're getting all these requests, so that's good.
We're trying to work our way, you know, a little bit through the county. The Farm, we met, I met with the Farm Commission and walked the site, and then they sent their request on, and it's signed by the town administrator. And I talked to the town administrator. They fully support the project at the town level as well.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a motion to grant the request from the Town of Millis for engineering services?
Yeah, I'd be happy to move that for the engineering services as described and requested.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant the request from the Town of Millis for Engineering Department Services from our Engineering Department of the town. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It is a vote. Number...
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. This is updated from that before.
Number eight. Personnel matters for consideration. I think we have eight or nine from the school and one from Treasurer's Office.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll move.
Absolutely.
I think there's one, two, five are for contingent employment. And so I'll move those as a group.
Right.
They're all student workers. So I'm moving the Norfolk County Agricultural High School for contingent employment as a student worker of the following individuals. Grace Cunningham, Paige Schneider, Olivia McCann, Elise Anderson, and Kylie Barnica. For student worker contingent employment at the rates stated, effective date on Grace, Paige, Olivia, and Elise is 7/7/25. And for Kylie, Barnica, it's 6/30/25. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in all favor. Aye, it is a vote. Next is notice of position change.
Yes, I move, Chairman, notice of position change for Isabella Rose Patrick as student labor. The rate stated, effective date 7/7/25. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor. Aye.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, the notice of rate change for Julie Randall as a student worker as the rate stated, effective date 7/7/25. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor. Aye. It is a vote.
And a second, last one, notice of rate change for Mirabella Romano as a student worker at the rate stated, 7/7/25.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Marilla, Marabella Romano, that's a great name. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Payroll expense warrants for approval.
Treasurer's too.
I'm sorry, one from the Treasurer's.
Right. For the Treasurer's Office, notice for schedule change for Lori Bellotti, Executive Assistant, and accounts payable. The information is stated it would be effective in a few days, effective 7/1/25. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor.
Aye. I believe that takes care of our personnel matters for consideration.
Right. Payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Right. If they have it, I'll do it for them.
Oops, sorry.
There you go. Sure, I'd be happy to move it. Mr. Chairman, the warrant list of 6/25/25, we have four items. 25-51 payroll of the county, the sum $154,752.27. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Second, payroll of the school, 25-51, parentheses, 26, the sum $430,806.27. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor. Aye.
Third, expense of the county, line 060425, the sum $309,929.27. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor. Aye.
And there's an item here for Opera Midway, I'm sure we're going to hear about, line item 25-51 Opera, and the sum of $15,000 to Town of Midway. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, in all favor.
Aye. That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Walk.
Next one, in your packet, request from the Dedham Square Circle to use, for use of the county parking lot at the Registry of Deeds building, July 17th, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, for the second annual summer stroll event. July 17th, summer stroll. We had this last year, I know we did.
Right.
Any questions?
I think we got the letter in our packet from Dedham Square. It was July 17th, with a rate dated July 24th.
Okay. Yeah, I hear this.
Be happy to move approval. We did it last year. There weren't any problems, I don't think.
No. I'm sure we would have heard.
Do we need to notify the Registry of Deeds?
We used to do, yeah.
Yep.
It's on Thursday afternoon.
Yeah.
If not, I'll move, Mr. Chair, if you want, I'll move approval for the Dedham Square Circle Group for Dedham to be allowed to utilize the parking lot as requested on the date of July 17th from 6 to 9, I mean, 6 to 9:00 PM, right? It says 6 to 19. Must be 6 to 9:00 PM, I believe.
Yes.
And then our rate date, July 27th, for their event. So moved.
Motion made and seconded to grant the request from Dedham Square Circle for use of the Registry of Deeds parking lot on July 17th for their second annual summer stroll event. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Number 11, report from the procurement department, bid openings and contract awards. Do we have none?
No, sir, not this week.
Not this week. Okay. Number 12, Opera transfer for approval. Director Collins.
Commissioner, as you may know, the Opera program continues in space currently dominated by the need to optimize grant awards. As I previously stated, we received a credit back from the Town of Canton totaling $18,148 surplus funds from projects that are completed. We notified Canton that they might be able to use these funds for additional growth or change order against existing grants. They politely declined. It was very appreciative of the offer, but they have closed out their projects. They're done. This funding consequently presents itself as a surplus. We have received a request from the Town of Midway for $15,000. I'll read the letter from the town manager. The writing to respectfully request funding, the amount of $15,000 to support the installation and associated electrical work for addition of automated doors at the Midway Senior Center. This improvement is vital step towards enhancing accessibility at the facility and will significantly benefit our senior population and the patrons who may experience mobility challenges. The cost for the automated door units, including hardware and installation, is just under $10,000. The other $5,000 will cover the time, materials, and labor necessary to complete the required electrical work. This particular item, you'll see on the document I just gave you, will be assigned against the excess capacity grant application that Midway had previously submitted to us totaling $105,000. So this is $15,000 towards that request. You had previously approved it under the warrant, but if you'd like to, at this point, approve the transfer request, we'll complete the circle and make sure that Midway gets its funding of $15,000 for the site.
Any questions or comments? $15,000 towards $105,000? To put in, and all that includes $100,000.
Well, there are other additional improvements, ADA improvements. This particular item is for the doors.
Okay. Sure. What are you going to vote for? All the, you draw with all the i's and cross the t's and...
They can't, couldn't use the 18 someplace?
Kick it back, yeah.
They've completed their projects and they were very appreciative when we called back. Bill spoke to them yesterday. I think he spoke to Randy and they said, no, we're done. We don't, we don't have any change orders coming our way, so.
We got any more money or hanging around like that?
This will happen over the next several months as communities arrive at the endpoint. As you may remember, you advanced a lot of funds towards projects that were estimated based on bid outcomes. So if you gave community, for example, $200,000 and they spent $180,000 to complete the project, you're going to see a surplus. That's why this process of transfers is set up, so.
I'm not picking on it. I'm just curious. One of my first ones was the Town of Stoughton. I wonder how close they came to using that money or if they used all of it.
One of our first awards, me?
Yeah.
I can check. I have not heard back on Stoughton and how close they are to resolving their grants. The last time I checked from a macro perspective, Commissioner, was it back in mid-May? Out of the 130 million that you distributed, 130, 31 million that you distributed, approximately 114 or 120 has been expended. So we're talking somewhere in the vicinity of 20 to 30 million. Sounds like a lot, but it's not. But as of May of 2025, had not been expended against those advances. So that number will shrink, obviously, as these projects become completed, like Canton. And then we'll see any kind of cushion change come back to us and we'll find a place to put it.
Would you like a motion then to approve the, the transfer from the Opera 1171 of Canton and Opera 1310 of Canton for a total sum of $18,000?
No, for a total sum of $15,000.
Oh, okay. So we'll move with the approval of the transfer of the funds from Opera 1171 and Opera 1310 for a sum of $15,000 to be transferred to Midway Opera 1373?
Correct.
All right, that's just correct. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Opera transfer of funds from the Town of, unused funds from the Town of Canton to be used to assist Town of Midway on a council on aging project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you.
You'll note that, as Commissioner State started to speak, the original surplus from Canton was $18,148, so there's about a $33,148 surplus. We'll find a space for that as we progress against existing and approved excess capacity grants.
They have to be for an application that's either existing or a surplus application.
That's correct.
Can't be a town like, I have one coming, we're looking for more money.
No.
Too late for that.
That window closes December 31st, 2024.
Except for our own buildings, county, right?
Well, we also created excess capacity grants to receive those. We've dealt with some of that last week, as you know.
All right. Sounds good.
That is all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number 13, report of the County Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items for the Commissioners. Last week, we received a verbal report slash complaint from a grand jury member about the conditions of the grand jury room on the third floor of the Registry of Deeds. The complaint was more related to the professional environment conditions, so I contacted the Norfolk County DA, who put me in touch with his first assistant. I met with her yesterday. We went through the space prior to the grand jury coming in for their seating Tuesday morning. The, the conditions of the building are fine, but the space needs some work specifically, and I've directed Mr. McGowan to do a deep clean of the room. That is a steam cleaning of the carpeting and a complete wipe down of all the woodwork, including the sills, the flat surfaces, and so forth. Following that, we recognized that in order to improve the experience of the grand jury, who probably knows sit in that room for eight hours a day, three days a week, there's likely going to need to be an investment of furniture. And the cost for that would likely be borne by the state trial court. So I reached out to my counterpart of the trial court, Chris McQuaid, who has some experience prior to the movement of the grand jury to that space from a space, I believe, that was located behind the Dedham Mall years ago. So he's got some historical knowledge of where we came from and obviously from the state perspective, what kind of furniture and environment should a grand jury have? So we're talking about tables, possibly tables with electronic electrical connections, modesty panels, and seating that has casters to allow for comfortable seating for eight hours a day. There's also some concerns about the rather primitive audiovisual that the grand jury uses to receive digital information and share it with the witnesses and so forth. And then finally, there's some concern about the privacy of the room. There's an adjoining judge's chamber that is used to queue the witnesses before they move into the grand jury space, and the trial court's desire of sound barrier, sound, hardened sound barrier, to make sure that expressions or comments made in the grand jury can't be heard. So we have some improvements to make. The trial court contact is receptive and we'll be scheduling a meeting in that space in the coming weeks after we get past the fiscal year. I'll report back to the Commissioners because initially it's more than likely going to be a cost that the county initially incurred and then it gets reimbursed by the state. But we want to be thoughtful about and scalable with what kind of improvements we're going to make. I did ask the District Attorney's Office if they envision the grand jury function moving towards the new Quincy Justice Center when it's built sometime in the next five years or so. Currently, the District Attorney does not envision that happening. He thinks that the grand jury's function will remain here in Dedham. So the solution will be thought to be at least a five to 10-year solution in terms of furniture and improvements to allow the grand jury space to be habitable, professional, and through an upgrade cleaner. So over the next several days and weeks, I'll work with our staff to accomplish the first phase of cleanliness, and then we'll let you know what it looks like for an investment of furniture down the road.
Questions?
So, just a thought, this is, you know, new territory for us a little bit. Any thought about looking at other courts that are in our county system? You know, we have a relationship with them and seeing what they outfit their grand juries with, is going to be there?
I did ask the first assistant to do that. She's going to be looking.
All right, great.
She's contacting, I think she said Bristol and Middlesex.
Beautiful. And they, this is reimbursable, far as you know?
It would be.
Should be, right?
For the furniture, yep.
Okay. Even the IT component to upgrade the technology? That's great. Good stuff. Good.
Yep. As a, as a tenant of ours, effectively, they, they would offset the improvement through their agreement to do so. If they decide, no, no, we don't want to do that, it won't happen. So, but I do think there's some modest room for improvement to make the space more professional, frankly. And when I looked at it yesterday, it was sort of the remnants of COVID. It was explained that when you look at it right now, you'll see static chairs, you know, side chairs, and in front of them are trays, tray tables that you would use, you know, at a, at a dinner function that have something to eat. It's a very small little table in front of a chair, and that's all they have to put their gear on, to ride on, to take notes, and it's completely, it's, it's, it's not acceptable. Prior to COVID, there were multiple folding tables that were dispersed in a U-shaped arrangement and allowed the grand jury to sit kind of in a semicircle towards witness, towards the DA and the exhibits. Those were dissembled and moved to the side because they were too close during COVID. We're likely going to move back to those until and if we upgrade the furniture. That'll give the grand jury more vertical service to work on, but we have to clean the room first. It's pretty, it's in need of a deep clean.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, what's next, Sean?
Do you need any kind of a vote on that?
No, we don't have any expenses coming right now. I've already asked Mr. McGowan to mobilize his resources to begin the cleaning, and I'll get back to him what we might need from funding when the time comes.
Okay.
That's weeks or a couple months away. We'll save those. The disaster recovery room in Walpole is ready for occupancy. I know our IT office has begun moving the hardware from downstairs at 614 High Street over to this room. It's been completely ready by our maintenance staff, both here and at the Aggie. I understand Pink Murphy has prepped the floors, washed and waxed them as well. So we're expecting some occupancy or readiness within a week or so, and that room will be officially transferred from here to Walpole. We're expecting the high-density storage system to be installed the second week in July, so about two weeks out. The vendor will be here to reinvent that room and turn it into the centralized storage that we have envisioned, so more on that later. When the new high-density storage system is ready, we'll be removing files from the Blue House and from the Registry of Deeds. We've talked about this back in January. The county has quite a lot of files, human resource files, as well as procurement files in both locations, that'll be coming into this space on the first floor. Once the, the areas where they're coming from are vacated, they'll be offered for reuse. I believe there was some conversation with the register, for example, back in January about providing him more space within the plan room where we currently keep our procurement files for his use. To that end, I've notified Mr. McGowan to halt any additional expansion of Registry of Deeds operational use of the building until we have a conversation, because there's so little space left that we need to be thoughtful about what is the intended use of that space and what is the plan for what the register might need for space going forward? And does that building offer the capacity to do that? So I'll be talking with Mr. McGowan in more detail about this as he'll be part of his FY '26 performance evaluation goals, because I think we should do this in a thoughtful and planned way, obviously in collaboration in this case with the Registry of Deeds and what their plans are. Some more on that later. And just a reminder, the Commissioners have agreed to pull off a meeting this Friday, 9 o'clock, to handle some, some year-end business, as well as potential ratification of two collective bargaining agreements, which we've reached tentative agreement on. That would be the facility maintenance unit and the Registry of Deeds. Both units have their union ratifications, I believe, tomorrow. If things progress and it's favorable, you'll be here Friday morning to handle that. So we'll update the public and yourselves on Friday what is before us as we end the fiscal year. That is all I have.
I may have to zoom in for that.
Go ahead.
Make it a double, double up on Friday, but I'll be available definitely. 9 o'clock, right?
Yep. Oh, one other footnote. Michelle and I will be having a meeting, an interview with a potential Palmer candidate early next week. It's been a while since we've had an eligible candidate step forward, so we'll keep you informed on how that progresses.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great.
Anything else?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Chairman, I did want to draw your attention to one item. I believe some of the Commissioners may have received a letter from the Registry of Deeds. This letter was dated June 18th. It was addressed to the Commissioners. I also got a copy, and I believe copies were also sent to certain news outlets. In this letter from the Registry expresses his displeasure with the status of the disaster recovery space. In addition, he attached a copy of a news article. I'm not sure what news article this was placed in. Quincy Sun. I'm not here to judge what the register writes. He's an elected official. He can write whatever he wants, as long as it doesn't impose on anyone's character. But in this case, the register writes, among other things, that this is an unfortunate sequel. He writes, "The county CIO wrote that the decision had been locked, looked at over the last 18 months. Yet in those 18 months, neither I nor registry staff were informed of any of this or even consulted by the CIO or the County Information Technology Department or County Director." The register goes on. "There has been no discussion about this matter with me nor my staff." So the elected Registry of Deeds wrote this to the residents of Norfolk County, and I wish to inform you..." You are here, sir. A few questions.
Thank you.
You are, sir. Then unfortunately, the register is mistaken. As you will know, there has been extensive dialogue or attempted dialogue with the Registry of Deeds on the disaster recovery space. Going back to October 25th, 2024, up through May 8th of 2025, there were 13 emails. Five of them with the Registry of Deeds and the rest with members of his staff. Subsequent to that, between May 14th and June 4th, there were four more emails with members of his staff. On the right, you'll see the response largely ineffective, empty, or non-responsive. The Registry of Deeds and his staff were contacted for their input on this plan, which you saw back in January, and the register was heard about, but to present to the residents of Norfolk that neither he nor members of his staff were consulted is factually inaccurate. That is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for the County Director?
I'm a little disappointed, truthfully, about this matter, because I actually got a phone call from an official from the Town of Wellesley, and then even from my own town, that they said, you know, what's happening? And I said, I, I would stand on the record that we've had dialogue on this matter. I know we've had discussions. I didn't have this backup, this, which has given me now, but I know there's been dialogue. Now, I know the register did not want that move to take place. I think he had strong objection, but to say that there was no discussion or opportunity of discussion is not really accurate. And I understand that we've had our differences. I understand that, you know, he's an elected official, but to betray us as being hard, heavy-handed and not, you know, making things without any discussion, this is not really fair. So on my own, I did set those people straight as best I could without this data. I did tell them that it's a disagreement, but we feel it's best for the county to relocate that in the Aggie building. And there was a discussion, an opportunity for discussion over the course of the last several months, so hopefully, I hope that those kind of comments, you know, will kind of be restrained a little bit. We can have our differences, but we don't want to have information that perhaps is not[1783.68] We can have our differences, but we don't want to have information that perhaps is not totally accurate. Thank you for this stuff, this is helpful.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, I'm looking forward to the new space here due to this realignment of everything. I mean, the fact that the emergency center has moved to Walpole, you know, it never go out, and thank God it doesn't get a lot of work, but you know, that's a great spot for it. Be honest with you, I mean, you could move you know, if one of those bombs, the president is flying all over the world, would God forbid, slip out and we could go down there and operate out of it, so to speak. And we need, we need, we need storage space, we need file record space. We being the whole county. I caution everyone that through the director that will operate under the revision schedule that's put out by the Secretary of State. Hopefully someday you'll you'll see the big truck pull up and they'll be able to take care of the discard. But there's a whole process here. You know, you have to keep things for twenty years, you have to keep payroll permanently, you have to keep personnel things permanently. You know, we're gonna we're gonna get, I like to use this phrase, I suppose, I'm sick of it, get into the twentieth century, so to speak. And this is just another effort to do it. I mean, we identified that space. We've all been here a few years now, included during COVID. There's very, very little use of it, and that's a good thing because it's an emergency. No way did it ever say it had to be across the street, but our predecessors put it here and, you know, what kind of work they did at the time? Not questioned, that's where it went. Now we're moving it down to school. I would even think it could have a school use in an emergency and things like that, so, you know.
Well, I think this is true.
But I, this is very interesting because
Yeah, that's very interesting.
I get calls like you do, I get calls from, and usually I when I, when they thought of responding, our legal counsel says, don't respond. I don't, but this is another matter, this is getting I don't know if anyone else published it the way the city of Quincy did, but I know that, I noticed it myself. I do have some correspondence, some connection with them on occasion. We'll see.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the director, do we need to sign these things, sir?
Those are all set.
Oh, you're all set.
I, you gave me the authority to endorse them.
Okay.
So they've been sent along and they're probably on their way to the governor's office, or the
Is this good for me, for the country? The one that does, yeah.
I believe they're they may be left over from our meeting. I'll be happy to take them out to the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Okay, last call on county director.
Do we have any more update on the multi-county meeting yet?
Yeah, so I forwarded your request for early August. Bristol County was meeting this week, and I believe Chairman Mitchell was going to evaluate another date.
Okay.
So we don't have a date, but the host is examining the options.
Okay, great.
I'll let you know.
That's all I have. Now, we don't, we're not adjourning, right?
We're not adjourning, we're
Standing in recess?
Correct.
Is that right?
We're going to recess on Friday morning at nine A. M.
So I would move, if you're ready, I'm moving.
I'm not quite ready.
Oh, you're not ready, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, oh, okay.
I don't have anything else except I want to and I think we've been doing this for a trial, but I want to shout out to our maintenance staff. I know that they were doing their job, so to speak, but I think it was stretched. I think it was extra. I heard stories that when we were emptying the balance four times a day just to keep up with needless to say, there was a big spill all the way into the registry building and we were using men's and ladies rooms. I think that the maintenance staff did a tremendous job, and I just thought it's a good time to put it on the record. We'd normally not stretch like that, but it shows that we can rise to the occasion and, you know, God forbid, have to do it again. We will. We have to do what we have to do. The other thing is, it's I love these historic buildings and that building is historic to the point of, you know, mountain stairs and everything, but no one realizes that it's probably built for nineteen hundred courtrooms. In other words, the year nineteen hundred didn't they're not modern, they're not updated, and people are going to say, well, there wasn't enough room for us and everything, but you're talking about a big, big change over there, if you want to change, you know. The nearest thing to it is going to be the new Quincy Court, but that's been a struggle there. It's probably still five years away, but, you know. These courthouses, we keep up with it as much as we can, but they're built a long time ago, particularly.
Although you now to, I had a case as a lawyer, I had some work in Plymouth, and the registry building, brand new, in the trial court, brand new.
Yeah.
Those buildings are beautiful, beautiful, one building.
What's your, Mr.?
I mean, I don't know what they had before, and how they got the money.
I think it was similar to us. This is a beautiful building, I stand by this building. I mean, you, you know, I saw our paint job every time I today put it on, the helicopters have been, I'm so glad we went for the upgraded paint commission.
They look good, they're great. But it's very further size and dimensions, too. It was built, you know.
I'm saying nineteen hundred, it was built long before that, but probably the last time the courthouse, the courtrooms themselves were restructured in.
Uh, Matt, John, you just reminded me when you mentioned Quincy, I forgot to give the commissioners a brief update. As you know, we don't own Quincy anymore, but we have an operational interest there. About two weeks ago, I informed the commissioners that the compressors that pushed the cold air into the building had all pretty much died. The state had elected to bring in a portable air solution via trailer. That solution's been in place for about two weeks. I spoke to John McGowan, who's fresh back from vacation, and he's been down in Quincy, as you know, during this heat wave, trying to help move the cold air into the various spaces. The trial court called me this morning quite concerned. Yesterday, they closed the court early. It was an extraordinarily hot day. The cooling could not keep up, I believe they closed at one o'clock. So this morning, we had extended conversations that the solution that the state had put in place to push cold air into the building in brief terms was basically a one-hundred-ton unit. Prior to this meeting, I had a conference call with the trial court and our vendor, and our vendor claims that if we had a hundred-ton unit out there, we need a minimum of a hundred and twenty and maybe a hundred and fifty. And that is just because you have to push more cold air into a building that's got high humidity right now. You've got to move the water out, cool the area. So the state is going to have another call this afternoon at three thirty that I'm asked to join the trial court administrator on. Clearly, that building is, it's doing what we all know it would do, which was to fail the air conditioning system during a heat wave at the worst possible time, but they need to come up with a solution, not just to get them through this summer, but next summer. So there's more heat emergencies coming, and they need to size a solution that provides regular and sustainable cooling solutions in that space. And I believe our vendor thoroughly impressed the trial court to contact today. His information will be shared with the administrators, so that they can make some changes, which I think will result in a higher tonnage unit going down there to cool the building. So ongoing problems, we're a partner with them, we want to help them, we provide onsite support and obviously we want the courts to be open as often as possible. That's the latest on Quincy.
So if I told you, is that requested amount, is that going to be bigger than what they had on Law Day? You know what I'm saying? A bigger, a bigger unit, those are big units.
They are.
But usually even bigger.
Yes.
Okay. Blood heat was tolerable, it wasn't great. It wasn't like, you know, this is comfortable. It was, it was stuffy.
They, what the technician said, and I'm not an A. Track person, but he basically said, look, if it's normally it's an eighty-degree day out and it's not a hundred and two, you could probably get away with eighty tons of cool air moving in. But the building was hot and it was getting hotter, and you're trying to cool it with a hundred tons. You're never going to get the chiller to create the cold water that you need, it's just not, you don't have enough power. So they're going to try that solution. I'll let you know how it goes with the administrator today. I haven't talked to Tom in a while, but I told him, do whatever we can. And they're very, very happy with the support they're getting from our site folks, so that's your Q. D. C. update, Commissioner Shay.
Thank you. I don't have anything else, I'm taking a motion to recess until Friday at nine A. M. for year-end closing.
I moved in recess at one forty-five until nine A. M. on Friday this week.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recess this meeting till nine A. M. Friday for fiscal year-end closing work, and then we'll close the year on Friday. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.